begins the one. This meeting to order Monday, August the 11th of 2025, this being our regularly monthly Alexandria County Board of Education meeting. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Board Member Anthony McLean to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to our Superintendent Dr. Bill Griffin.
Great, thank you Chairman Reese. Members of the public and the audience that are here today, we've adopted a new mission and vision for our school system. I'll go into the implications of such a little later on in our meeting. But from this point forward, I would like to begin our board meetings by reciting that mission and vision. It's just words on the wall if we don't begin to apply them to the things that we do. So I want to remind all of our constituents and those that are watching our board meetings what we're about, what our mission is, what our vision is, and I'd like to begin doing that after we do the Pledge of Allegiance during each board member, our board meeting that we have. So Chairman Reese, what I'd like to do is say something to the fact of effect of in Alexander County Schools, our mission is to be committed to, and then I'd like for y'all to repeat as you see our new mission, which is building a legacy of excellence. So this time, if you guys repeat with me here, Alexander County Schools, we're committing committed to building a legacy of excellence. Great, and our vision in Alexander County Schools is to be the educational choice for every child. And again, if we begin doing that, I hope it becomes something that we live by and something that all of our constituents and parents and community members know what we stand for in Alexander County Schools. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Board members, the agenda is before you. Before I get your pleasure, we need to add in a closed session. So what is the pleasure of the board to approve the agenda? I've got to make a motion or a motion to approve by Board Member Oxentine.
Second.
A second by Board Member Argüés. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like manner. Okay, carries unanimously. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Danita Dalrevis for our honors and recognition.
Thank you Chairman Reese. So first of all, this is our first meeting back after the summer and it's August and we're kind of got our mindset on thinking about school ahead. But we have some students and some staff members who have been very busy this summer. And so we want to first talk about our Beta Club group. Beta Club members from Alexander Central High School, they competed at the National Convention in Orlando, Florida. This was in June and Beta Club sponsor Donna Reed tells us that the students competed in 21 different competitions and placed in eight. And she says to her knowledge, that's the most they've ever won at the Nationals.
Good job.
Some of the winners had to take tests to play, some had to draw something or design something, some had to perform. So the first group, we're going to split them up into groups. So the first group, we're going to ask up our Aniston Chapman, Chloe Eckard, Beau Lewis, Erin McLean, Carter Payne, and Pierce Reed, Pierce Reed. Appreciate Mr. Bowles helping us out. So isn't he? So Aniston Chapman got fifth place in the 12th grade psychology exam. Chloe Eckard, eighth place in 12th grade health and PE. Beau Lewis, second place in the 11th grade health and PE. Erin McLean, seventh place, 11th grade spelling. Carter Payne, eighth place, 10th grade spelling. And Pierce Reed was the champion for 11th grade science. So give them a hand.
Hide me, hide me back here.
I'm going to need y'all to squeeze in and angle your body like Mr. Reed has first, so you can angle that way, you can angle that way. Yep. Okay, everybody looking this way. Do y'all mind if we, I know some parents wanted to get some, y'all want to pop up and get some? We don't get to do this kind of stuff for y'all.
No, do it.
All right, thanks y'all.
Great job.
All right, next we have a recognition. Next, we have a recognition for the musicology team, which is also part of the Beta Club competition. And they take a quiz about music and that allows them to earn a spot to move on. So when they moved on, they were competing against 15 other teams and they had live rounds where they had to answer questions about music from all genres. So the students who are on our musicology team are Erin McLean, Chloe Eckard, Aniston Chapman, and Pierce Reed, if y'all will come up, and they earned third place nationally. Okay, the next, I feel like I say this every year, but this is not an unfamiliar face to us, so we're going to ask Carter Payne to come up. And this is the second time that Carter has brought home a national championship in the performing arts. So Carter, I watched the video and what I could discern is that it was a medley of several songs, which included When You Wish Upon a Star and You've Got a Friend in Me, any toy store fans out there, that's that from that one, and several others. But those are the two I picked out, am I right? All right, did you write that? You collected it together? Good deal. Well, he always has good energy in his performances and he had a two minutes to perform and impress the judges. And again, like I said, brought home the first place award, the championship award for the second year in a row. So congrats. And lastly, I'd just like to ask the Beta Sponsor, Ms. Reed to come up. I understand that she's going to be a state rep for the Beta Club, the Beta Club organization. She was chosen to do that and I think that's like a four-year position, so that means you gotta stick around that long at least. So that's a pretty big deal, that's a pretty big deal. So we applaud her and her work is evident. She sends me stuff on the regular and post things and so on. And we appreciate what she does with the students and I know she has help, but thank you. Okay, also busy this summer were several members of the FFA and their teachers. And during the state convention in Raleigh in June, some of the students came away winners. So earning second place in the state was our Ag Mechanics Team, and that was made up of Jude Bumgarner, Colt McKee, Lucas Day, and Weston Rogers. Y'all come on up.
Dr. Revs has got a couple of parents trying to get some pictures too.
Oh yeah, y'all jumping.
Before they leave.
Great job.
All right, next, we're going to ask Ally Lackey and Laurel Mitchell to come up. I was going to say Laurel has gone away to school, yes, yes. Okay, so they submitted projects and those awards weren't announced at the state convention and they were announced as champions. So Ally was the champion in veterinary science and Laurel Mitchell won for beef entrepreneurship. All right, next, let's ask our Dairy Judging Junior Team to come up, and that's Daisy Smith, Laurel Mitchell, Joel Payne, and Sadie Russ. Those of you who are here. So these students also won first place at the state convention and they had to judge cows based on a set of criteria and then present their reasoning for the scores that they had assigned to the animals. So first place, good job.
Congratulations.
All right, and finally, for the FFA recognitions, we have another championship team. That's composed of Brennan Little, Weston Brown, and Micah Chapman. They won what's called the cattle handling competition. They, and these students have to know about safety, industry standards, and how to care for the animals. So this is your cattle handling championship team. All right, and our final recognition for tonight is we have somebody who's been designated to be a Paul Harris Fellow. We'll tell you what that means, but we'll ask Ms. Head, Carrie Head, to come on up. So Ms. Head is a social worker who serves Alexander Central and Alexander Early College. And she is this year's Paul Harris Fellow or one of the Paul Harris Fellows. That's a recognition that acknowledges individuals who have had contributions made to the Rotary Foundation in their name. And it has to be an amount of $1,000 or more. So in particular, Ms. Head is very involved with helping the local Rotary Club collect and distribute food for children who are students who need it in our school communities. And I know she has stayed on me and other people this summer posting when they've had some food distributions around. Y'all probably have seen those posts and so on. So rather than taking a summer off, she still had the student and the community's interest in buying. She just makes sure that their basic needs are met. And I hope I have this right, you're in your ninth year with the district? Okay, ninth or 10th, okay. So we appreciate your service to families and the community. Thank you, Ms. Head. So this concludes our honors and recognition and you're welcome to stay for the business portion of the meeting. Or if you'd like to be excused at this time, you may go.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks everybody.
Thank y'all for coming.
Congratulations.
They're out.
Seriously?
They're out.
How'd it go, boo?
All right, people.
Taylor, what's up?
Taylor, you need a sundrop?
Buddy, I'll go get you one right now.
I just always kind of assume. HQ down there.
Is this the Rob Argüés fan club? Do they think you're one of the new kids on the blog or something?
See you ladies.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
All right, we are going to get back and realign. That is always a fun time in our agenda is the honors and recognition portion. It is something that we take extremely highly serious, especially for these kids, the teachers, the staff, everything that is a part of it. And so now, as we segue into our next piece, it is time for public comment, which I have been instructed that we do not have any. So now we will move on to the approval of our consent agenda. Board members, you have your consent agenda before you. What is the pleasure?
Motion approved, second.
I got a motion to approve by Board Member Anthony McLean. I got a second by Vice Chairman Degenhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like manner. Carries unanimously. At this time, the next item on our agenda is school board voting districts. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor Dillinger.
All right, thank you very much. That is a very tough act to follow. Those award winners was great. I'm going to tell the surrounding counties, they better get on the ball. They got some work to do. But as mentioned by Chairman, we're going to spend a couple of minutes talking about the Board of Education Voting District, redistricting project. We're going to talk a little bit about the redistricting process, why we need to do it, talk a little bit about some of the data that was needed for the project. We're going to go through some of the maps and the data tables, and then we'll finish with the timeline of where we are and how things are going to go going forward. So with that, you have a little bit of background information. So what is redistricting? Redistricting is actually associated with the census and it occurs once every 10 years where every person or resident in the United States gets counted. We've actually been doing that since 1790. So we've been doing it for a long, long time. Redistricting is a process where we redraw electoral districts to balance population following a national census. And the concept of redistricting maintains the principle of one person, one vote, and ensures fair representation. And we actually have a lot of local school districts and cities that actually have to do redistricting. So an example of that is Hickory City Schools, they have to do it. City of Hickory, Town of Longview, they have to do redistricting. Newton Conover Schools does redistricting as well. So we, not everybody has to do it, but we do have several in our four county region that do it. Okay, now we get to the state statutory requirement part. According to state law now, each of the seven Alexander Board of Education voting districts will have one person that lives in that district that will be elected to the school board. Eligible voters in each Board of Education voting district will vote only for their school board member. By state statute, all newly drawn Alexander BOE voting districts must be within 5% of the Alexander County District Population Average. So this is where the math gets involved. The 2020 Alexander County Population was 36,444. When we divide those by the seven districts, we get an average of 5206. That 5206, we have a plus or minus 5%, so they have to range between 4,946 and 5466 for the population. These are the current Board of Election voting districts. They haven't been updated since 2001 and they do not meet statutory standards, so we have to redraw them. What was the data used? And again, keep in mind, the purpose is to ensure that one area in the county doesn't have extra voting power compared to other areas of the county. The voting districts need to be contiguous and compact as we can possibly make them. We did overlay the elementary school districts with the proposed Board of Education voting districts. But it needs to be stressed that this doesn't impact current elementary or middle school boundaries. Those boundaries are going to remain the same. So this is different than that. So we're not moving the elementary boundaries, we're not moving middle school boundaries. Some of the data that we used, of course, it's going to be based on the 2020 census. So we're going to collect 2020 census block population information from the US Census Bureau. We're going to use those block boundaries to make up the boundaries of the voting districts. We're going to use the Alexander County road layer, and that's very important because we want the voting districts to follow roads and precinct lines for Board of Elections. And then finally, we overlaid the elementary and middle school district boundaries. We also received input, valuable input from Alexander Board of Elections. They had several recommendations for us and we've taken care of those. They wanted us to remove voter precinct slivers, for instance. We've done that. They requested that voting districts follow roads and/or voter precinct lines. And we've done that and Board of Elections has reviewed the map to make sure we did that. Making this change was an interesting challenge because the voting districts have to follow census block lines and many of those census block lines are now not bounded by roads. So many of them were bounded by streams, railroad tracks, ridge tops, and even utility lines. Actually, this is typical of a lot of rural counties in the state. And we've even discovered through the process that some of the Alexander precinct lines use streams for boundaries. Okay, so kind of giving you a background, some of the data collection. Now we're going to talk about the maps and the data and the analysis. All right, here's some highlights before we show the maps and tables. Again, all the voting districts are bound by roads and/or voter precinct lines. That did lead to some changes in the shapes from the previous scenarios. Voting districts are aligned as close as possible to elementary school districts. But this is important, it needs to be noted that the Board of Education members, they serve the interests of all students in the county. So it's not just their primary elementary district, but it's all the elementary students, all the middle school students, all the high school students. And you kind of saw some of that on display a few minutes earlier with the recognition, their support of some of the awards that we just saw. All current Board of Education members, residences are located in their own voting districts. And that was a major goal of the redistricting project, just from a standpoint of fairness. So we don't want two board members having to run against each other if we didn't have to do that. So we were able to accomplish that. And finally, all newly drawn Board of Education voting districts are within 5% of the 2020 district population average. We have to do that to meet the state statute, which was told to us by the state legislature. We have to follow what the state legislature wants. Okay, here's the voting district map with the population counts. If you notice the table on the slide, all of the voting precincts are within plus or minus 5% of the voting district average. In fact, we actually ended up doing a little bit better than that. We ended up within 2.5%, which is great. We want them to be as equal as possible. As you can see on the map, we have seven districts. And again, each one of the board members will serve one of those districts, but they serve all the students in the Alexander County school system. This map overlays the elementary district boundaries with the voting district boundaries. So I'm going to go through each of the seven districts and talk about which elementary district they are primarily in. So District 1 is located entirely in the Bethlehem Elementary District. District 2 is located in parts of Bethlehem, Ellendale, and a little bit of Wittenberg. District 3 is located mostly in the Wittenberg Elementary District. There are some small portions in Ellendale and Taylorsville. District 4, the light blue color that you see, that is located in Sugarloaf and Taylorsville Elementary Districts, just a little bit in the Hiddonite District. District 5 is located in the Ellendale and Sugarloaf districts. There's a small portion in the Taylorsville District. District 6 in the green, that's located mostly in the Hiddonite Elementary District. There's small portions in Sugarloaf, Taylorsville, and Stony Point. And then finally, District 7 in the purple, that's located mostly in the Stony Point Elementary District, small portion in Hiddonite and Wittenberg districts. Again, the members serve all the students. It's not just students that are inside their district or one elementary school. So I wanted to stress that one more time. This map shows the voting precinct maps with the voter district boundaries. And again, we wanted to follow roads and precinct boundaries and we've accomplished that. Each Board of Education voter district is Each Board of Education voter district is generally located in two or three voter precincts. And that's good for Board of Elections because they've still got a big job ahead of them, so hopefully that'll make their life a little bit easier. And if you want a copy of the district map with the voter districts, I've got them on the seat there, and I'll leave them in the back if anybody wants a hard copy of that. Of course, we also have a digital copy as well. Okay. So I know that was kind of a quick overview of the map and the data. Let me talk a little bit about the project timeline, because the boards actually met several times on this. There's been several work sessions. The first time, to me, it was like a blur. Maybe this is what happens when you get over 50. It was kind of like last week, but it's actually been over several months. So we first met in April at the work board session. We talked about the redistricting process, the requirements, how the process was going to go. We gathered the information. We did our first scenarios. We generated the draft maps and tables. In June, we reviewed those draft maps at the June work board work session. Fast forward to July, we made changes based on Board of Elections' input. We reviewed the new scenario maps and the data at the July work session. Board of Elections reviewed it a little bit more, just to make sure everything was good. Now we get to August. So any adjustments we had to make, we did those. We presented them at the work session last week, which again, seems like five minutes ago in my mind. Then we are at tonight. So the Board of Education schedules vote to approve the new Board of Education voting districts during tonight's meeting. If they vote to approve, the next step is any printing of the redistricting materials, any of the maps, digital copy, hard copy, we'll do that. We'll make sure that the information's put on the school board website, make sure Board of Elections has everything that they need, make sure everything for the geographic information system, which is the mapping segment that Alexander County does, they've got everything that they need. So, and I know she's not here tonight, but Lisa Harrington with Alexander GIS did a great job helping too, as well as Board of Elections and the staff for Alexander County Schools. So I want to give a big shout out thank you to everybody. It was, it's really been great, great teamwork. So I won't get into others, but all right. What happens going forward? August to November, we're going to complete work if the board votes to approve. The Board of Elections, they're going to complete work on the candidate filing, the canvassing that they need to do. If anyone has any questions about how this process works, Board of Elections staff will be glad to answer those questions. They work very diligently behind the scenes that you don't necessarily see when you go to vote, but it's a critical thing that they do. We get to December. That's when filing is going to begin for the four-year terms that are up in 2026. This will not immediately impact the board members whose term is up in 2028. You will be in your voter district in 2028, but you're allowed to finish your term as it is now. Then going a little more forward, when we get to spring or summer 2031, under, again, the state statute that the legislature's passed, Board of Education will need to review these districts again, and they'll be based on the results of the 2030 census, barring any weird COVID stuff. COVID messed up a lot. We don't ever want COVID again. It's really bad. So assuming we have no COVID 2030 or anything like it, the data will come out in 2031, we would reevaluate it for the 2032 election. So I know that was a lot of data tables and maps in 10 minutes or 10, 15 minutes or so, but be glad to answer any questions. And again, a big thank you to everyone who helped in the process.
You've done a great job doing what you do.
Thank you for what you've done and helping us.
You've been good to work with, and you've done a good job.
Really appreciate it, yes, sir. By the way, saw the football team at the scrimmage on Friday. They're looking pretty good this year.
Awesome.
I saw several long runs for touchdowns, so.
We like hearing that.
So yes, schedule's tough, but I was, for you guys, I was very encouraged.
That's awesome.
By the scrimmage.
That's good news.
Yeah. All right, members of the audience and constituents that are out there viewing us online, before we make this vote to move forward with this, this board would like to let everyone know how transparent we want to be with anything going forward. This, as you have heard from Mr. Dellinger with the Westin Piedmont Council of Government, there's a lot that goes into it, and you know, it's like he mentioned earlier, it seems like it has been a blur. But this was first introduced to the general public during a working session, January the 7th of 2025, during our superintendent's report. It was then made mention during a working session on February the 4th. The current Board of Elections Chair, Patrick Wyk, presented during the superintendent's report, March the 4th of 2025, once again during our superintendent's report. There was April the 1st, Taylor Dellinger, he presented during the superintendent's report. And then subsequently after that, June the 16th, July the 14th, and August the 5th. The reason that I bring this up is because we want folks to know that you've had opportunities to express any concerns that you have. That's one thing that this board prides itself on, is wanting to give our constituents and the general public the opportunity to express themselves. Some other things that I wanted to make sure that is specifically clarified is, if you listen, Mr. Dellinger hit on a lot of them. One is that this board, we are comprised of seven individuals. All the while, it is seven districts. We represent every child, every staff person, every intricate piece of this district. We do not want anyone, it is not our intention that anyone feel any different. There has been a lot of collaboration, and whenever I say a lot, a lot of collaboration on this, on part of the Board of Elections, council of government, the county, there's a lot that goes into this. Even at one point, things were mentioned to us, why are you spending this amount of money when you can do Dave's redistricting app? Which, by the way, we had no idea that there was such a thing, but even if we had tried to adventure that, there is no way. And two, as a board, we chose to go the direction that we did with the council of government, so that nothing could be said that we had our hands in on it, that it was done by individuals that specify in statistics, and they do this. And you see how everything has been made so seamless. The next thing was, this was brought about by the election. This was voted on by our constituents, folks in Alexander County. It was not something that we, as a board, said, hey, let's do this. It was brought before the public put on the ballot, and it was voted on. And we, as a board, had, the Board of Elections and our esteemed superintendent, look at the bill to make sure that we were following the grounds and what was written in that bill. Because you have to watch the words shall, herewith, must, there's a lot of different things that goes into that. And that bill said that it had to be seven districts individually represented. So it had to be that way. So as the board embarks upon making a motion to move forward with this, we wanted our constituents here and those viewing online to understand and know, you know, where this is going. And as Taylor mentioned, this is not going to impact where your child goes to school. I need that to be understood. It will not impact where your child goes to school. Now, does that mean later on down the road? We may have to, but as of right now, no, that is not the case. What it does do is it helps aid in there not being as many potential that would be on the ballot. You know, like at one point in time, whenever Josh and I ran, there was six, there was six candidates that was on the ballot for the district. So it's just, it's going to make things, it's, yeah. So I wanted, the board wanted everyone to understand this. So anyhow, and that was input that was also given to me from my esteemed board members. So board members, without further ado, Taylor has presented to us as a board these voting districts. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion to approve by Vice Chairman Degenhart. I've got a second by Board Member Argüés. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like manner carries unanimously. And I did happen to think of something else. The other reason that we wanted to move forward with this was to help our Board of Elections offices. They do a fantastic job, and we wanted to make sure that we did our part in helping a tough situation not be that much more tougher. So Cheryl, we appreciate your help and your input very, very much. And Taylor, thank you so very much.
Wonderful work with you.
Thank you, really, really appreciate it.
Taylor, you made a very complicated process look easy.
Thank you, appreciate it. And my wife's the stats teacher at North Lincoln, so she's going to make sure I get the numbers right. She's at open house right now, so.
All right, next item up on our agenda is the technology report from our esteemed technology coordinator, Kim Bishop.
Chairman Reese and board members, we discussed the bids that were available for Wittenburg and Hidnite's paging system. So I would ask tonight that you would approve us using Encore for both those projects.
I make a motion.
I second it. Got a motion by Board Member Oxentan. I've got a second by Vice Chairman Degenhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like manner carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim, we appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is our chief financial officer, Sharon Mahaffey.
I don't get to be the esteemed.
Always.
I think you're esteemed, Sharon.
You are our esteemed hero and leader.
Tonight, I just wanted to say again that the auditors visited our system last week, and we had loads of fun with that. And Shannon will be here in October, at the October work session, to present the financial statements and discuss the audit. Last month, I was pleased to report that we did not use any of our current expense fund balance. Did you get that wrong?
I saw it on video, and I was tickled.
Good job.
Great job, Sharon.
Great job, Andrew.
Well, I want to acknowledge the many people who made that possible.
Yes.
First of all, for the finance department, for their diligence, our directors who manage their budgets carefully, and special thank you to transportation and maintenance, who finished the year significantly below their budgets.
Good job, that's great.
Also, to Dr. Griffin, for his commitment to evaluating every vacant position to help ensure the effective use of our resources.
Yes.
Good job.
One of the major things that has happened recently is the legislature approved what they call a mini budget. When they cannot reach agreement to approve a full budget, they take parts of the budget and approve that. They improved a new retirement rate of 24.67%. That's up from 24.44% last year, and that will increase our expenses by about $50,000 system-wide. Health insurance coverage increased to $8,500 per qualifying employee, up from $8,095, and that will add an increase of $195,000 across all programs. As I mentioned, because there's increasing ADM in some parts and some school systems across the state, and no additional funds have been allotted by the legislature, they had to take the funds that they had and divide them among the school systems. So as I mentioned, we had, in our planning allotments, were set to lose 3.5 teaching positions, and in our initial allotments, based on that percentage, it was five teaching positions. Well, in this mini budget, they gave additional funds for ADM, so we're back down to our original planning allotment budget. No salary increases were included in the mini budget, but we were given, we were, we're going to be allowed to give step increases to teachers and other employees on step-based salary schedules. One of the things that was a major challenge to us last year was the change in DPI software. DPI was using a software that was over 20 years old, and the companies just said they were not going to support it anymore. Unfortunately, DPI was unable to effectively coordinate with the school system vendors, our finance vendors, and this affected everything from ordering cash to reconciling staff allotments between our records and DPI's records. We have a set of books. We transmit them to DPI, and then DPI has a set of books, and those two have to match. We were assured back last fall, in September, when these problems started happening, that it was a long way to June, and all the problems would be solved. And then it got to be March, April, and almost May, and we still had problems. But we were able, and I think the audit will show this, that we were able to effectively close out the year. And I want to give a special thanks again to the finance office and their perseverance, and especially to Andrea. Andrea did a lot of the work that, just day by day, going in and checking things, and I appreciate that very much. Until we get a full budget, we'll continue, or at least the state gives us enough mini budgets for us to do a budget, we'll continue to operate under our continuing resolution.
Sharon, if I could comment real quickly on that. Grateful for you and your staff's continued effort to balance our budget.
Yes.
That was no easy undertaking for us to do last year, but we knew we had to. And I'd also like to compliment all of our employees, HR, Dr. Clower, for making sure that we're constantly operating within our means. Those are no easy tasks to do, but this was a commitment by all of our employees, and it certainly wasn't an easy task. We've heard for years now, we have to operate and do more with less, and then it's just a reality, it's the world we live in right now in public education. But just grateful to our staff here in Alexander County Schools for understanding that, continuing to understand that as our ADM, if it decreases or increases, whatever that may be, we have to adapt to that each and every year. And that's what we will do to make sure that we stay afloat and that we're able to run our schools effectively. So thank you to the board for understanding the hard work that goes in by this staff to make that happen. So great, good job, great job.
Yeah, great job.
Good job, Andrew.
Great job, Sharon.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the human resources report from Dr. Alicia Clower.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I just throw in a quick comment that we had teacher orientation today, the first day of it? Thank you for those of you who could attend and were able to do that, but we had a great turnout, a great day of sessions with those folks. We'll continue. So thank you for that. But you have those before you, and those are our usual and customary procedures. Do you have any questions or concerns?
What is the?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Vice Chairman Daganhart, second by Board Member Corey McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like manner carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clover.
Good job, bud.
At this time, I will turn it over to our fearless leader, our superintendent, Dr. Phil Griffin.
Thank you. Chairman Reese and Vice Chair Daganhart, members of the board, have several items here for us this evening. The first, just talking a little bit about our rebranding, an update of where we are with that. You will begin to see new logos, of course, our mission and vision that we led the meeting with, and I'd like to give an overview of all of that next board meeting. And I want to forego that this time, because ultimately during open session this year, I want to talk to our our staff members about what the meaning is behind that. And I owe it to them to kind of unveil that to them them first until I do it to the public. So I'm going to forego going over all of that to the general public until I have an opportunity to speak with all our staff members. So I'll do that at opening session. We were able to have our district retreat, administrative retreat there at the end of July, three days that we spent together. Just commend our leadership teams for all they bring to the table each and every day. I believe we had three quality days. We ended at the Hidden Knight Gem Mines, and we didn't find any emeralds, so none of us can retire at this point. But I think what we did find was was an atmosphere of collaboration, an atmosphere that we can have a laugh with one another every now and then, and the fact that this staff endured triple-digit heat in a gem mine together, and nobody complained or fussed about anything. That's my kind of people, guys. I appreciate you going and doing that with us, and I did see some smiles and some laughter, and we had a good time. So I'm grateful for the team that I'm surrounded with there. Next on agenda is House Bill nine fifty-nine. You guys probably are aware of the new law that's been put in place. That House Bill basically states that we have a new cellphone policy across the state of North Carolina in our public schools. This has made the news, I'm beginning to see across social media and the news channels throughout the state of North Carolina. We too, here in Alexander County, have to adhere to to that policy. And it's very, very simple in scope of what that says, and I'll just read it here to make sure we get it right. Session Law twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, that's House Bill nine fifty-nine, simply states, it was adopted on July one, twenty twenty-five, was created by the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash seventy-six, which provides regulation of wireless communication devices in public schools. In particular, it requires that all public school units must adopt a policy by January one, twenty twenty-six. That says at minimum prohibits students from using, displaying, or having a wireless communication device turned on during instructional time and establishes consequences for violations of this policy, which may include confiscation and disciplinary measures. So from from this point, each principal at each of our schools will be communicating with all their parents and all of their students about the policy, how it is going to be adhered to and reflected in their school. I need parents to understand that this is law. This is not something that Alexander County Schools came up with. I believe it's a good law. I believe it has merit to what we're trying to do. However, we didn't establish and create this single-handedly. And we shall and must follow the laws that are put before us.
Amen.
So there will be some changes, potential changes in your schools. The number one change, and I'll not speak for every school as to what this means, typically our elementary school is not that big of a difference from what we've seen. Middle schools, I'd say there's not too big of a difference. High schools, you have to understand that state law basically says that you cannot use or have visible or own your wireless device without permission from your teacher. So students, when you cross the threshold of the door and you go into classroom, that is to be, that phone is to be gone and put away and adhered to the policies by your principal in each of those schools. So just be aware of that, and parents, again, understand that that is law, and we will adhere to to what that law says. Next, we have another law that is that is new to us this year. We have a law that's put out by the North Carolina Center for Safer Schools that basically says there's a set of said videos that must be shown to our students by the fifth day of school this year. I have a letter that I have sent out to each of our schools. That letter has been sent out to parents by those schools, by each of those schools, and this is associated with grade six through twelve. So our middle schools and high school students will be shown by law a series of videos, and these are just videos guided to make sure that the children, our students, are aware that sometimes there are individuals that make bad choices, and to watch out for those bad choices. It does not state that we have any anyone within Alexander County Schools that is doing and making these choices. However, law says that we watch out for these things. And ultimately, we want to do anything within our power to make sure that our students are safe. So these videos will will go out. Parents, you will get a letter from me. Embedded in that letter are the links for these videos. You can watch those at your leisure, you can watch those with your child, and if you choose for them not to participate, you can contact your school, and we'll assist you with that. However, by law, these videos must be shown, and they will be shown to our students within the first five days of school. So once again, this is not something that we came up with, that Alexander County Schools says, hey, we're just going to do this willy-nilly. This is the law that's out there that we have to abide by, and we will abide by it. And again, I think it's a good thing because we want our students always safe, and we want our adults making good choices.
Yes, sir.
And I will tell our adults during open session, if you don't make good choices, then we will handle that situation. So that's just common sense and it's law and it's why we're here. The next thing that we have are all positives, and ultimately, Alexander Early College started school today, and I see Mary Brown in the audience, so great to see your staff and great to see your students there, those classes being filled with with our students ready to learn for the school year, so they started today. We started optional teacher workdays today in the county as well. We have opening session for all of our employees, and that's on the eighteenth at nine o'clock in the morning at the auditorium. I would encourage the board to come. Again, I said all employees, this is not for teachers. I purposely want every single employee in our district to be a part of that. We're all a team, all of our jobs are important, and I want us to celebrate together. And I've tried to create a culture here that that opening session is not something we should dread, but but we get together and we high-five one another and we celebrate a school year, and what we do is for career, so very proud of that. The eighteenth through the twenty-first are required workdays for our teachers. On the twentieth, our ninth grade back-to-school bash will be held. The twenty-first, we'll be having open houses, and our dates, our calendar is really kind of confined on what we can do, and open houses are happening for all of our schools that same evening. It's very difficult for parents, I understand you may have children at multiple schools, but we're just kind of confined on when we can have those and when we can put those together with our calendar options. So those will be on the twenty-first, the twenty-second, optional teacher workday. We have our first home football game here versus Newton Con over here at the stadium behind us, so grateful for that. We have other sports that are starting this week, and they're on the schedule, so glad to see them back in action. The twenty-ninth, Early College, I have an optional teacher workday and no students for those, no classes for those students, and then on nine-one, we have a holiday. So times are flying by, and then on the second, we have a work session scheduled here. So things are certainly happening in a quick and orderly manner. And then finally, the last thing I need to remind our public is on the fifteenth, will be our next board meeting, September fifteenth, and that was switched from the eighth to the fifteenth. We backed that up a week. I'll be out of town at a conference, and the board was was kind enough to back that up so that make sure that we're all on the same page. So I appreciate that, and just want the general public to realize of that change. A lot going on, seeing our audience field tonight brings me a lot of joy. I love the start of school, I love the fact that our faculty and staff are back here at school, and I can't wait to see all of our students. Mary, I hope you had an amazing day today as you started the school day, and look forward to an amazing school year, and we will do great things, I can promise you that. Thank you very much.
Dr. Griffin, I want to add a couple of things. This is our last board meeting before school starts coming up. I want our faculty and staff out there to know, on behalf of this board, we hope and we pray that you each have a phenomenal first day, and we are here to support you thick and thin, okay? The next thing, you know, members of the audience, constituents out there online, there's been a lot of information that has been shared tonight on behalf of our superintendent. As I was just sitting here, I was just thinking this, I would like to challenge parents and those out there in the public, come and attend our board meetings. We as a board, we want to see people here in the audience, not just when something is going on, but anytime, anytime. This cellphone policy that's coming out, like Dr. Griffin mentioned, it's not us as a board, this is law. You know, you hear so much stuff on the news, but you know what? Come and get that information firsthand, not second-handed. So as your children start a new school year, start maybe a new process for you as parents. Come and attend a Board of Education meeting. We would welcome you. It it it, it's sort of kind of, I don't know how to put it, whenever at the end of the honors and recognition, you know, to see everybody leave, we laugh and we say, we want you to stay. So but anyhow, Dr. Griffin, we appreciate all of the efforts that you have made and that you continue to make, and we look forward to a great school year.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is proposed Board of Education policy revisions, second reading, Dr. Alicia Clover. I had to look at that to make sure that I sing Dr. Alicia Clover and not Sharon Mahaffey. The eye doctor, the last time I went, they tried to encourage me to get bifocals, but I'm resisting, and so I had to double-check, I'm like, okay.
I've resisted as well. I now have contacts that are, sometimes I get them backwards, sometimes you don't know what I'm saying, or saying. Okay, so we do have our second reading, I'm trying to pull it up here, since I did not pull it up on the board, I'm going to get better at this part. You got me, Michelle? Here we go.
Teamwork.
I'm going to start bringing that mouse up here with me. So we are on our second reading for Board Policy sixty-one forty about student wellness, where we added some items from our check beginning last month. Any questions about that?
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Board Member Argüez, a second by Vice Chairman Daganhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like manner carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clover. And then now we are to, next item, we have got some Board of Education policy revisions, first reading, Dr. Clover as well.
We have some more revisions to put up. So for Policy thirty-six twenty Extracurricular Activities in Student Organizations, they have added a new subsection addressing those items listed there. We have Policy forty twenty-three slash seventy-two thirty-three Pregnant and Parenting Students and Employees, added some language in that according to Title IX. Policy forty forty slash seventy-three ten Staff-Student Relations, again, some more revisions with newly adopted State Board of Educational rule that's in place now, and Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety Policy forty-two forty dash seventy-three, revising another section with more adopted State of Education.
You want a motion on that one as well?
Bring that one back next.
You'll bring that one back, okay.
Take a look at those, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clover. All right, board members, this concludes the open session of the portion of our meeting. Can I get a motion that we close open session and we enter into closed session?
Make a motion.
Got a motion to approve by Board Member Oxentine, a second by Board Member Anthony McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like manner carries unanimously.